Okay, please call me out. So, yeah, see, right? All right, so with that, I will start by calling the attendants who stand before me. Okay, so trustee Kelly?
Present.
Trustee Palastrini?
Here.
Trustee Robinson?
Present.
Trustee Mott?
Present.
Trustee Coles?
Present.
Trustee Porter? And Ms. Engle? All right, with that, we have a call. Will you please rise? We would like to see you.
I am the President of the United States of America and as we are the father of the foundations of this nation under God, we are visible with the Constitution of Justice for all.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up to speak this evening?
We do.
Do we need to get more chairs or?
Bonnie and.
Ms. Engle, you've signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Clamell?
Apologies for not getting with say or ahead of time to be on your agenda, but I'll just take five to seven minutes. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Hampshire Township Society, give you kind of a state of the association update. It was about a year ago that we started as a development committee to divide the activity of the organization post-COVID. In that, so a year later, we have about thirty-three members and we're always welcoming more. Our goal is fifty. Last year, we had six programs for the public on various topics, and we're planning nine more. Our next one actually is next Thursday, and it's Belle de May Grimes, who is ninety-four years young and is still fabulous at the keyboard and sings and swings. And she, I said, Belle de, what do you want to name this program? And she said, Swingin', Sway With Belle de May. I said, okay. So that will be, I think, a very entertaining program this Thursday at the township building at seven. Our other main goal has been to interview seniors in our community on their lives in Hampshire. These seniors are mainly in their sixties, seventies, eighties, and up, and we are video recording these interviews. We've done nine to date. We've had a little challenge getting people to record the interviews. We have peop-- we have seniors, we have a priority list of the fragile seniors, and we have people ready to interview. So now we're solving the problem of people to video record those interviews, and our goal is to have twenty-five by the end of this year. So by next year, being next May or June, we will have thirty-nine to forty digital hours of programming and senior interviews here in our community. We still have a serious need for a place and a space. As I think most all of you know, our treasures are upstairs. It's not climate controlled, it's not handy, it's not on display, and we really want to keep it on our screen to either rent or find some other means of fundraising to acquire a place or a space. Since we are a 501(c)(3) property, there is a tax benefit to the landlord or to a seller to do business with the Hampshire Township Historical Society. We're quite aware of our big celebration in 2026, and one thought might be to have a three- to five-year lease of a location, and in that time do major fundraising, and perhaps with the lease would option to buy or acquire a location. We're quite aware there are some properties available downtown. There's a really interesting vintage property possibility, but again, it takes funds or grant writing assistance. You know, one thought might be to have a Hampshire tourist center and history museum, which would perhaps use some use of tourist dollars as well as for historical and educational purposes. So Hampshire tourist center and history museum is one thought. If you ask me, what kind of fundraising are we going to be doing? Honestly, not much. Most of our members are over sixty. You blink, and pretty soon you're over seventy, and those that are younger frankly have a love for the Historical Society, but I think they love their families and their jobs more, and so people are just busy. So we're in this window of time. We're in this window of time of increased activity, increased visibility, increased interest, and can I promise you it's going to be long-lasting? I don't know, but I do ask you, keep us on your screen, in your planning, in your future budgeting, and in your thoughts and prayers to continue to support the Historical Society. And I really do thank you, because these, some of you have been active, very active with us, and I thank others of you who have contributed and joined, and invite you to see Belle de May, Swingin' Sway This Thursday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming to see me.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Is there anyone else?
That's it from the seat.
Okay, so before you, you have the meeting minutes from June 2nd, 2022. Keep in mind that Stephanie Gray is remote, so there's a little bit of delay. Does anyone have any changes for the meeting minutes as presented? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented. So moved.
Target.
Questions or comments? Okay, so this is going to be the first one. Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Palastrini?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, trustee Mott?
Aye.
Trustee Coles?
Aye.
Trustee Porter?
Aye.
Who was the first and second on that?
I'm here.
Moved by close second by Robinson, Mr. President.
I'll get this sent to Assistant Senator. All right, so next we have our recognition, Officer Dan Paradise. Chief, how do you want to handle this? Do you want me to do it? You want to go with it?
Go right ahead.
You're the boss.
Well, first I'd like to say that Dan was with us for about ten years, and he's semi-retired to pursue another career, which he soon discovered that he missed his little niche in the world here in Hampshire at law enforcement. So he wanted to come back. Fortunately for him, and fortunately for us, he had a spot that needed to utilize somebody with Dan's experience, that being an Escher role position at the middle school. Since Dan had stepped into that role, I received nothing but good comments from the middle school principal and all the faculty, and Dan has furthered that by taking the grade school, the elementary school, under his wing and spends a lot of time down there with security and reading books and singing with the kids and just kind of getting involved with them, and that is utmost.
It makes a big difference in the young.
Huge.
To see, to see the police involved in a way that they are. Thank you so much, Dan. I could read this whole letter. Before you guys in the packet, we have a letter from Fritzville, former Fritzville of Hampshire Elementary School, Lisa B.W., which her last name, everybody goes by, Lisa B.W., going over some of the great things that Officer Paradise has done. I love seeing him on Facebook with students. I love hearing the stories from the parents that interact with him. He's a true professional, and we've got all learns of him, that's for sure.
I think that he kind of expanded it a little bit where our high school Escher role goes over to Gary D. Wright quite often too, when he's kind of starting up a program there to just become part of the faculty, if you will.
Yeah.
Seeing first thing in the morning and last thing in the afternoon, so it's.
For those of you that don't know, Officer Paradise worked almost exclusively midnight for a long time, so it's very, still odd to see you with Dan. But we're happy you're back. Does anybody have anything to add? Speech?
My daughter is actually a kindergarten student at Hampshire Elementary, and she has mentioned, not your name, but the police officer in the building, and she loves seeing you. She's very shy, but she comes home and she, we saw a police officer today. She loved it, yeah, she loved it. And I, as a father, it gives me great comfort knowing that you were there as well to protect not only my daughter, but the other hundreds of kids that are there. Thank you.
One of the goals that we had when we took this position, I know we all did, was trying to get the police engaged with the community a little bit more, try to have a little bit more fun. It was kind of harder to do when we were short-staffed, but now we're at a staffing level that allows us to spend more time out in the community doing this kind of stuff. And as you can see, it really makes a difference. It really makes a difference. So I really, I really appreciate the department's dedication to our community, and thank you, Officer Paradise, for all you did.
Thank you, Dan.
One more time, Dan.
No, no, I'll come to you.
Right here. Make sure that we, I.
All right, you don't have to dance, I just made a picture.
Thank you.
Charlie, have a little bit of that. Thank you, guys, for coming. Okay. Fantastic. Thank you, thank you for allowing us to do that.
Thanks for inviting me.
Okay, next, we have appointments tonight. As you know, we have, we have an opening on our police commission. It's been open for a little while, and there's been a variety of different applicants of different backgrounds. So Mr. Russ has served for the village for a long time, as former trustee and now is on the police commission. This would be a reappointment for him under the Board of Police Commissioners for a three-year term. Ms. Lori McReeve is the chairman of this committee and recommends this appointment this evening, and they're both available tonight for questions. Would we have any questions for Mr. McReeve or Mr. Russ? Okay.
You said it was a reappointment?
Yes.
So currently on.
Yes.
So it's just a renewal?
It's a renewal.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I will.
Nothing from Toby?
Huh?
Nothing from Toby?
If I got something to say, you'll hear it.
I know.
I think I talked about.
Are you going to answer?
All right, I think with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the reappointment of Mr. Russ at a three-year term of police board commissioners.
So moved.
Okay, I have a, I have a first and then you take second, Mr.?
Trustee Robinson and trustee Mott.
I was talking about.
Sorry.
All right, all right, so I have a first and a second. Do we have any other questions, comments, or discussion? And I'm going to call and roll. I'm not going to switch this up like Linda does, okay? I'm having heart. So trustee Kelly? Trustee Palastrini?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Mott?
Aye.
Trustee Coles?
Aye.
Trustee Porter?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Russ for attending.
Thank you.
And Ms. McReeve, you guys are certainly welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Yeah, I'm, I got a household of people at my house, so.
Run while you need to.
They're making sure I eat.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Hedges?
I have it. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'd ask your consideration of a motion to award a facade improvement grant for 199 South State Street at the Rose Garden Building, and we normally have a number in here, but there are a couple of numbers floating around, so I'm just going to defer to trustee Kelly. We have a, we have also Chairman Ryan of the BDC and Joseph Falwell, who's a member of the BDC and chairman of the certification committee, who will also be part of this discussion.
Yeah, so before you are two applications, one is for 199 South State Street. Make sure I get that right, yes? What we've affectionately called the Rose Garden for years, so the building right on the corner there. We'll start with that discussion, and then we'll go into 199 April place. I'm just going to kick, kick it off and then hand it over to Chairman Kerjacki, also Commissioner Swallow. It would like, there's a, the BDC met last week and discussed this, both projects at length, had a really good discussion. You can see the artwork on the whiteboard from the certification and the BDC about discussions on what did it look like and different options. The recommendation out of, well, before I get to the recommendation, I do want the board to know one thing, and this is something I've been thinking about for a little while, is that as a member of the BDC and the trustee sitting on the BDC, I lodge a vote at the BDC whether to approve or not the recommendation to go to the board. That being said, when it comes to facade program, votes on this village board going forward, as long as I'm on the BDC committee, I will abstain from those votes here, and I will let you know what my vote was in the BDC, so that you know if there are any questions. But my job is to represent the recommendation to the BDC. In most cases, it's unanimous recommendation, but if there isn't, then we talk about it. So just so you wonder, when we get to the vote, why I'm abstaining, that, why I'm abstaining, my vote, I feel, is lodged during the BDC.
Thanks for that, because now I'm here to explain if it can be abstained.
I usually do get an explanation if I abstain from something. So in the, in the first one, there was a lot of really good discussion on different alternatives. The proposal in front of you is for the original application. Let me explain the process we went through, and then I'm going to turn it over to discussion. The original application, if you're looking at the drawing, was to have a brick facade on the south side of the building all the way to the top, along the base of the west-facing and south-facing side there. The three-foot base is a stone here, or a stone facade, so it would go stone, and then on the south side it goes brick. On the west-facing side, it was going stucco all the way up, painted and refinished stucco, which is what the current building is stucco on, right? So if you can imagine brick of what like the Christina Michelle Salon looks like on the front, that would be the south side. So in our discussion, we said, well, could we ask for two additional bids as options? The first one is to take that brick facade and do it across the entire front as well, or the west-facing side, so the whole thing would be brick, it would be beautiful. That came back at forty-two, thirty-two thousand dollars more than what the original project was at, so then it was felt that that was probably not financially a good thing to recommend to the board. We also discussed the option of having that three-foot stone go up the corner, as you sometimes see in some buildings and houses, to do a transition between the brick and the stucco. That came in a lot higher than expected at like twelve to fourteen K, and the numbers are in the packet. So it was felt that just for that corner, that's probably not the best financial recommendation to make to the board. So that is why the original recommendation or the original application is what is being recommended, which is the brick on the side, the stucco on the front. There is more being done to it, but that's, if you wonder why there was discussion of three different bids, that's why, or three different proposals, that's why it was on the BDC's ask to look at what those were. Because of the cost of this, there was also an ask to have multiple bids so that the project can be presented with the lowest bidder. The recommendation out of the BDC was unanimous to approve the project. With that, I will turn it over to Chairman Kerjacki and Commissioner Swallow to add any.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, I allow Bill to do the magic that Bill does. I do mean that, I mean, before I say anything, I do want to recognize the facade program, the talents that he brings to work, and the level of detail and engagement that he, you know, takes on with each applicant, certainly has a lot of these successful ones. So I will leave the hard and fast details to Bill. So I think Aaron captured it. There was a part of us that felt like we liked the proposal. Certainly, the Rose Garden is a cornerstone of the project. You know, we've long wanted that building, this point, to be included in our sort of refurbishment of downtown. We just had some ideas of, you know, from looking at some of the projects that's been done previously, whether it's a copper barrel, whether it was the 148 State Street building with, you know, the condition stone, you know, with a brick, excuse me, with the lamppost, that continuity would be nice. So that was really what, you know, conversations that we had that day was, well, we really liked the proposal, but, you know, the stucco, we weren't, you know. At first glance, we thought, well, maybe it'd be nicer if that was stone, and we went to the south side and made that sort of announcement, you're going to invest in the brick. So that was really, a lot of times when the owners come and present their ideas to you, it's their idea, which is fine, and we had originally at the beginning of this whole project five years ago, kind of tossed around the idea, whether we came up with hard and fast rules as to what had to be done, and inside Business Development Commission, we had come to the conclusion that we really trusted the business owners to come up with their own things, and we felt like we were more likely to get people to apply if we didn't bound them with such heavy regulation on specifics that they had. That being said, we are the number one, and we are the major investor in the project, and I feel though, as though we as a board, which I think sort of follows all along with you as well, are representative people of Hampshire fundamentally, they're the ones who we work for, and we thought it was a reasonable ask to see if we could see an alternative that would suit more what we thought might work. But it turns out that those numbers came in, you know, kind of part of my reason, but we did want to be diligent, so I think it gets to the point where we at least had a chance to see it, so that we didn't look back, and then, you know, standing on the side of the road, and someone asks, well, why didn't you do this? Well, at least we might do. So, so that's really all I have to say, and I really just wanted to thank Bill for the extra local work that he was able to bring to the site. And Bill, I mean, if you want to add, because there are some specific, I think, important things you want to talk about, the kind of the refurbishment of the original design and so forth.
Yeah, that's, that's an important component. This, this project was pretty important. I think it's going to add to the downtown quite a bit, and of existing buildings and the past projects, I think this one's going to weigh in pretty heavily and make quite a difference in the downtown. The owner has been very good to work with, very open, very receptive to suggestions and ideas, which is half the battle. One of the elements that was not included in his original proposal was the restoration of the facade, which part of it currently is missing, was removed last time they remodeled, whatever the case was, it was unstable, they actually took the facade around the building. But as you've seen some of the Hampshire historical photographs of that building, you'll see the dotted line portion on the right half of the building, that, that section is gone, and we thought it was important enough to get a separate proposal for that, to restore that, to put that back the way that it was. The front facade, at least at this point, with the one main proposal you have, will still be stucco, which is what it was, but at least they'll be restoring that masonry facade to what it once was. So that's in there separately, I think. Other than that, these are sample boards, the material. The material is accurate, the color is not. The owner has yet to make the color selections, and when he does, I'm going to bring those in, so that everyone can see those before they actually are applied to the building. This is the natural faux stone that is going to be, it's three or four feet up, that runs around the perimeter, across the front and down the side. And then this is, this is a real brick product. What it is, is products that are actually sawn down and colorized, and this is what would go up right now, the south side, from the stone masonry all the way up to the, to the E. So these at least give you a touch and see and feel idea of what's going on. Colors are to be yet determined.
And that is one thing that, as Chairman Kerjacki talked about, that we thought was important, is that Commissioner Swallow is involved when the material is being looked at, when the colors are being looked at. As the major investor in these projects, we want to make sure that it, you know, we don't have a yellow brick wall type of thing, right? And so we thought that was a fair ask, is for him to be allowed to work with the owner of the building to make sure that it's in approval of what you would want, or BDC would want to see in the downtown area.
When we get the actual color selections, they'll be forwarded to you for everyone's review and comments, and that'll be the paint color that goes on the stucco on the front, as well as the color of each stone or materials when he makes it. So, and I think it'll happen pretty quickly, as he, the contractor is interested in getting started. That was one question that I was asked at the BDC level, and that was, what's his timeframe? How backed up is he? And I posed that question to him when I met with him last week, and it sounded, and I explained the pending ribbon cutting and the opening of the downtown, and it sounds like that's something he may be able to accommodate. I didn't expect that, but that's neither here nor there. But at least you know what his timeframe is. So other than that, do you folks have any questions about the proposal that you see?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did the BDC discuss anything about being forty-one percent, approving these, being forty-one percent over the existing budget?
Yes.
Because I've not mentioned, I've not heard anything about that yet.
So that, that is before we go to vote, part of the discussion.
That's forty-one percent increase, and when the BDC was developed and built, we discussed never going over budget. The BDC was discussed as when we reached our cap, we were cutting it off to the following fiscal year. Mayor Reed, am I wrong?
I know, you're absolutely not wrong. I do, I do remember that being a very, when we initially tried to get this passed at the board level, it was a very hard number at a hundred thousand, but then if you remember, there was a few years when we found, we fell short on the funding, two years, I believe, and we actually cut the funding down to seventy-five thousand dollars because we didn't have the hundred thousand dollars to put in. I think it's also important, I agree, I agree with you, because I remember those discussions. And I also think that, I'm going to ask Village Manager Hedges to step in here and kind of talk about the funding in general, where we are as far as the money goes, and then I can give you my opinion.
Well, so before we get to that, to your specific question of the BDC discussing that, that was absolutely part of our discussion, and we had felt that that was an okay thing to move forward based on what you'll hear from Village Manager Hedges as far as fund, extra funding being available for, either due to projects coming in under budget or grant money still being available, so if you want to speak to the budget availability. But we did discuss it, and it was recommended based on what had been presented as available funds.
And I'll just say very briefly that originally we had committed our entire ARPA funds to the North South Water Connection, and that budget, that project came in almost four hundred thousand under budget, so those funds are, some of those funds have been assigned to other tasks during the budget process. And also, keep in mind that we had the street skate scope changes that you'll be dealing with in future meetings, but I can tell you that Lori and I agree that the funds are available for this. There's roughly two hundred thousand dollars of our committed ARPA funds that are essentially general funds. Now.
So wait, let me, so for the record, what is our village manager, our finance director, going to commit for a budget for the BDC for this year? Is this it cut off, or are we going to just take them as we get them?
That's not for our, that's the board's decision. Yeah, that, that falls on us, and so the conversation at our level has to be, so can you, the ARPA funds, just for clarification, that was for, what we were using for was lost revenues or one-time expenses, correct?
Lori can explain that. We're essentially, we're using the complete salaries, because that's the one automatic thing that's provided for by the department.
I just want the board, I just want the board to be clear that, to be clear to the board that we can use those funds for this purpose.
Technically, we're not using those funds for this exact purpose. Technically, those funds are going to the general fund, the general funds we use for this party.
Which we're legally allowed to do, so it's not something that we're misusing several dollars for. Right? Now, to start, now to your point, trustee Coles, we would have to decide if we were going to take on these projects, or if there, or if there's any type of buffer that we want to give for the rest of this year due to current circumstances, or if the board wants to say, no, we're hard and fast at a hundred thousand dollars, and that's it. So I think that's part of our discussion, because as we discussed, I think, I think we discussed it in our last meeting or one of the meetings before, we're the keeper of the dollars.
We're, we're the keeper of the dollar, right? So with the, no offense to the BDC. The process is, the process is, is that the project comes before the BDC, and that comes before the BDC, it's vetted through the BDC, and then it's recommended to us at whatever funding level that they would recommend it to. It's up to us as to whether or not we want to commit dollars.
I get that. That ain't what I'm asking. I'm asking, are we gonna stop here? Or are we gonna continue taking on applications and pick and choose and maybe add a few more?
That would be based on the direction of the board. So tonight, if you say, you could say, okay, let's open it in case more applications come in, so long as the village manager and finance director says there are funds available and allocated, you're comfortable with that, that could be a direction to go. You could say, we're gonna, because the, we feel these are important, we'll fund these, but nothing else for the rest of the year. Or you could say, we'll fund up to the $100,000 cap, or, except it's up to the village board.
If these two get funded, what are, what are, is our number gonna be at?
If, so based on these two applications, the total for the year would bring us to 141,396 and 38 cents. So that's page four, that has page one. And that's at recommended 75% funding for the whole projects.
I think it's important to add that we asked, Mr. Swalwell does have another application that we received from DeCave for roughly $25,000. Under 20, under 30,000, about $25,000, and it's not been reviewed by the BDC.
And so, and at same law, and Mr. Swalwell and myself are going to meet with DeCave on Monday to discuss their project and see where the goal is, and find out what their timeline is and that kind of stuff. Again, it's just a matter of, it goes through the process and whether or not we can commit. Because we've had that too, if you remember, there's been years where we committed, we said, okay, we'd love to fund this project, but you're gonna have to wait until next year because we're out of money here. So I, I think that that's, that's our role in all of this.
I have no problem approving. The problem I got is when the next person comes and we say, oh, you know, your money, you can't do it. Wait a minute, you just approved two more and swelled your budget 41%, but now I want to do mine, and you're saying no.
So I.
That's what I don't.
I, I think that we're all, I think, I, I agree with you. Because we're, the biggest thing that we've always talked about at the board levels, we've always been really cognizant of setting precedent because we don't want somebody to bring in that kind of argument, right? The other part of this is, because I think I'd be more on the side of, okay, a hundred thousand is a hundred thousand, let's wait till next year. However, the streets tore up, 72 and State Streets all tore up. This, 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 this village has been impacted by construction in ways, and businesses have been impacted by this construction in ways that we, we think, I think it needs a pretty good grasp on, but we probably can't comprehend it as well as business owners. So I, I can imagine from a business owner's perspective, now's probably the time, they're not getting the traffic they're, they're, they're supposed to get or normal again. So now would be the time for them to put some money into the business so that when downtown's open, they're done, and they're ready to go.
I think the ultimate goal too, and we talked about this in the BDC is, the day that we say there's no more facade program, because all of the businesses have been, there's no need for it anymore. You don't budget anything for it. That would be the ultimate goal one day, is that everyone just gets out of their places to send downtown.
And unfortunately, that'll never happen because somebody that did it five years ago in 10 years is gonna have to re, so it'll never end, will never end.
Well, but we, we as a board could make a conscious decision to start lowering the amount that we budget every year, knowing that most of the stuff has been done, you know.
No, I was just saying, I just wanted to add, so the idea, you remember the real, original spirit of why we did this? The idea was that the village was partially culpable for the way that the downtown looked. The reason that they were partially culpable was that we didn't enforce code enforcement. We didn't do a lot of the things that is part of the responsibility of the village board. So we felt like there was this time that was reasonable, if not reasonable, but almost, you know, compelling, that we step in and sort of contribute to building the ROI bridge. Fundamentally, that's what the facade program is, is we try to build a bridge between how much money it costs, right, and the ROI that an individual business owner has to make in order to make that investment. The problem was the economy or the amount of sales gotten out of any building that someone was turning a business was not enough to substantiate the investment that would be required to get you there. So it was a responsibility, in our view, at least the argument at that time was, that we build a funding bridge. But I thought, in my opinion, I think it would be well within the bounds of a good reason that once we do get to a point where we have satisfied that culpability, that this program should end, right? Once we get to that point, I don't believe that we should be in a position to constantly stand in on behalf of private enterprise. Private enterprise, right, is, is a separate entity within our society that needs to make, you know, cost valuation decisions in order to make their investments. Those decisions cannot be made because the ROI is just not there. And during that period, I think it's reasonable and is the fault of the village to step in and buy that funding. However, it is of my opinion that, that my job should is to implement it. We will have lived up to our responsibility. We would have sort of restored our position as the, you know, the responsible entity within the town's municipality. And then it should be back to private enterprise to fund their own endeavors on their own. And, hey, if you're not, people should not have to participate.
So your point, we now have the code enforcement to go along with that, where that will not be lacking anymore.
And remember, that was one of the things that we talked a lot about is, once we make this investment, that all the people that are participating should be very aware that the second thing that comes is, we have now made our investment into you, there's a very, you know, very high expectation now that it's your responsibility to maintain that one. And if you don't, then, you know, we're gonna feel very, you know, comfortable and within the bounds of our rights to come in and pursue whatever, obviously, we have to make sure. We don't want to do that, but we felt because we were, you know, we had made a mistake collectively as the Andrew, Bill, people of Banjo, and letting it get to that point, that we sort of step in, we participate. But once we get it back to, in the baseline, that responsibility then gets transferred back to private enterprise. And then we go back into our normal enforcement laws.
The way, the way that I kind of looked at this, because I thought long and hard about it because we're over, right, we're, we're over budget by 41% as, as Trustee put it out. We had two years where we committed $25,000 less because we didn't have the money. We committed upfront to start this program and invest $100,000 a year in the downtown. And for two years, we sent, we kept the program going, but we shorted this program $50,000. We're in a position now where we have the $50,000 to, to put into the program to make up for at the time that we, we didn't have it, okay? Then to, to your point, Toby, I would think that if we do approve anything over that $50,000 mark, which would in my mind make this program old. Remember what it is that we, we went over, over that $50,000 and take it out of next year. And if you meant last time, I meant the right off the top, for the next year. And say, okay, so we go over, you know, say we're at 65,000, then we'll start next year at 85,000, and that's it.
Trustee Coe, they do agree with you. The choice or decision that the board tonight isn't just the approval of each individual one, but it's also the willingness to go for budget. And if you do, is this it? Or knowing that there may be more coming, if you say that you get, we make up to a certain. So those, those are all things for discussion. And I would ask the direction tonight, as a BDC, we need to understand, do we accept more applications, or do we say the decision of the village board is no more?
I think you have to accept more after accepting these. Going over budget before accepting them, you've already opened the door to more people to apply.
I agree with that.
Tell me I'm wrong.
No, I don't, I don't, I like to.
No, no, seriously, and I think this is something to talk about.
And how many of these, on, on these applications, do you guys look at, is any of the facade money being used to get a building up to code or not? I mean, if code enforcement officer went out to any one of these, would they find anything wrong that if we approved the grant, they're gonna use the grant money to update a code enforcement issue?
I think undoubtedly, yes.
Well, the, the purpose of the, of the application is to rehab a building. One, it has to be up to code once that project is done. But the funds are used for the specific project outlined in the application. It can't be diverted for some other thing that comes up. And so that, part of that review process is, you know, if, if we think back to the old hardware store, that facade program was to bring it to code, and that's it, right? And so I think, I believe there are very strict rules that in the application, if you're approved for 63,669, you are to use that for exactly the project that's outlined in the application.
And you have to get a permit for the work. So when work is done under a permit, can be done outside of code. So I think there, like, that should sort of tie those two things together.
But if you're asking if the funds that we're issuing are, are being issued to correct a code issue, answer yes, we approve that.
I think what he's asking is, is it going to be used for facade or for something else?
Yeah, well, it has to be used for exactly what's saying. My question was open for all of it.
Okay, well, then you got all your answers, I hope. Trustee voter.
Thank you. So I have four questions. Does this mean that the whole building is now up to code?
No, this only covers the facade. This is our typical building as far as the external. Are you talking about the internal?
I'm talking the whole building.
No.
But that's not, that's not within the periphery of this program.
Well, it's not, it's not in this application.
Okay. Because one of the things that's.
Inside of the building is not in this application, is that's the safe to say.
Second question, when you mentioned that the village might, you know, go after if the property owner doesn't maintain it, can somebody please explain what the village's role would be in that? What would that be?
Well, it's the same thing that we did with, it's a hardware store before the program, where there was insulation coming out of the side of the building. Or it's, or it's like we talked about, if they don't cut the grass, it's the code enforcement stuff. It's any clear cut violation.
So it's part of our code enforcement.
Right, which before, which before we didn't have it, then we do.
Right, okay. Question number three, when do the property taxes go up so that we start seeing a return on our investment?
That's up to the, the time for the assessment.
So theoretically, the building would get assessed after the building, it's during the normal assessment period. It would be assessed at whatever that phrase.
Oh, yeah, within a year.
The assessor doesn't, they don't miss a year.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and then question number four, what's our limit then?
Well, I guess, I guess that's the conversation, this is, do we set a hard limit, right? Or do we, I don't want to say leave it open, but I, I want to say that, you know, again, my, it's not just my thought process, but, because I want your input, but we committed $100,000 a year at the very beginning of this. So I, I really feel like we're $50,000 short. So if we right the ship at $50,000, and then take next year, see that the majority of the buildings of downtown that have, have worked down to them, I would say anything over that $50,000 mark is my, my thought, is take it out of next year's budget. Just start with, instead of, instead of it being at $100,000.
So allocate.
Allocate less, being the fact that we allocated more this year, and start that process and then next year cut off.
So it was mentioned that we'll have another application. So that puts us at a hundred and.
Nay, nay, nay.
Who's that?
It was just a name, that's.
Oh, okay. So we'll be at 165 with that.
Well, but 25 is total value or 75%?
About 18.
So that's a total project, so it would be less than that. It would be the percentage allocation of that, whether 18 or 20 or 15.
So we'll be over that one 50%.
Right. And so then I would say next year, we start to scale this back.
I understand that, but.
I don't want to flip flop year to year. 50 this year, 150 next year.
I'm saying scale it back and that's what it is. Scale it back and that's what it is. I, I understand what you're saying about precedent, I really do. But there's also not precedent for your street being tore up and downtown being redone first time in 60 years, trying to take advantage of a facade program.
I think more businesses.
I gotta say, I don't know that that's a good argument to make for the facade going over budget. I think having available funds from grant money that were unexpected is the argument. I think every business is dealing with it, whether they have five for a facade.
How many more businesses do we have that have not taken advantage of this? Do you guys know?
Right. I, I really don't, I, I don't have command of that. No, I would say maybe two. No, I mean, theoretically, right, if you look at the boundaries, yeah. Well, some of, we've got target properties that were very early, that, right, lost. Been there a while. I mean, we're through a good chunk of the big stuff, right? At least, you know, but there's, you know, anybody who is along those property stretches that fits their profile has the opportunity to apply. But I would say, what, we're year five, because it was the first year we got it passed. Because I haven't been to this five years. First year we got it passed, second year we started funding. So we're year four. Yeah, I mean, we're a good chunk of the way.
Well, I would say 50%.
Maybe we need a hard number for the finance director on how much available funds there are. And if there's 200 grand, then just let's approve these and keep on rolling. Let's just keep on rolling. But we need to know how much, how much funding's available. I don't want to fund each individual project, how much funding's available for us to fund the BDC's projects for the year.
We can bring that back to another meeting. I'd just like to get more comments. I would just encourage you to consider these grants on their merits and not limit your future, whether it's the future this year or the future next year. You don't know what's gonna come before you. And, and I, I said the same thing to Chairman Kujek, even with the BDC, just considering this. And the BDC, look at what's before you, make that judgment, the village board will then decide about the funding. So that's, that's, that's why they're continuing to act on what's in front of them. I think those were the exact words somebody said, here, when the first grant came before you earlier this year, and it was for $57,000, well over half, let's look at what's in front of us and not anticipate what's coming down the road. So that's all I'll ask.
Agree 100%. My question again to you is, is there money still available? Do we cut it off, or do we just let it keep going? They know, you've just mentioned that they know, but the village board don't. I want to know.
What do you mean?
You just said that the BDC has been told that they have the, the funding's available.
What I said was, the BDC was asked, deal with what's in front of you, let the village board worry about the budget.
So my question is, is there more budgetary money available?
Yes, I explained that just to, Mary asked, I said, yes, we have roughly $200,000 uncommitted.
Trustee Paul Street, I think, has a question to try and to get in, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. It was a very good discussion. My biggest concern here, just like Trustee Coe, is, is the budget. This, this is coming to us about two months after we just approved a brand new budget. And if there had been a request or a decision or a want to have additional money for it, we could have done that two months ago. I mean, if the budget process was in October, November, I can see people, you know, coming forward now. But we just did this. And if there was a desire to have an increase in this, I really wish somebody would have come and asked. I mean, and, and that's what we have done when we had the meetings and we left it open, anybody that wanted anything. We did have members of the community that came forth to talk about, you know, things like Coon Creek and, and other, you know, things. And this didn't come before us. And that's what's really sticking me here is because it could have just two months ago been brought up, and it wasn't. I am 100% for the facade program, but I'm also the budget committee chairman. So this is kind of coming out to increase something 40% really doesn't sit well with me. I really want the downtown to look great. I, you know, no problem investing funds, but we just did the whole process and everybody set this, you know, how much we were gonna spend and the, you know, we weren't over budget this year, which was great. And, and now so quickly, we're, we're doing this. I, I'm just really uncomfortable with that.
I think the hard thing, we talked about this in the BDC a little bit, not this last meeting, but before that, was not, not knowing when an application was gonna come in, how do you, how do you approach things? That's when Village Manager Hedges said, just take the applications that are in front of you. Because we said, do we need to have a date cutoff so that we can say all applications due by this date? So everybody can look at the in total and see what the budget is. But how does that hinder somebody who may want to purchase a property or invest in the community halfway through a budget cycle? There's no way that you apply for a program. So completely understanding here, I think it's, just so you know the background, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. The background was as the application comes in, that's when it's considered. So unless we know it's coming, it's hard to say. And this one came in originally, and I want to thank Commissioner Swalwell for that. The 199 South State came in $42,000 higher, $52,000 higher than what we see here. And, and it was like, no, we need to see at least another bit on this because 132,000 or whatever it was for a single project is, let's get another bit. And so this, this already represents working down that original.
Technically, I mean, as well as, if somebody could have come in with a $200,000 program and would have eaten up everything that was in that fund. I'm really concerned that we don't have it written in some way that there's a limit. I mean, I, you know, even if it's a ma- I mean, I, you know, even if it's a maximum of twenty-five thousand, four people get twenty-five thousand or four businesses get that. But if we're looking to fund as much as we are, that's a huge chunk of change. And as you said, we could have a whole bunch of people coming forward, and as trustee Code said, they'll come back in ten years because, you know, things need to be, you know, re-fixed up and, and spruced up. So I don't see the program actually ending, it's got a real purpose right now and there's a big need for it.
So why don't we just recommit, as we talked last meeting, we recommit to kind of reevaluating this program as it exists and how we want to move it forward. That's something trustee, or trustee Krajewski, I'm sorry, it's a bad, yeah. Former trustee Krajewski and Chairman Swalwell and I have talked about doing, and trustee Kelly's been going to be involved. And so why, before we, before next budget cycle for sure, let's recommit to evaluating the program to see if we can address some of these concerns. But for now, how do we want to handle what's in front of us?
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve these two.
Well, we haven't even talked about the one. We haven't talked about blocks at all.
I thought we were approving both of them. We're currently on the one ninety-nine south.
So let's, so let's.
Each one's each its own motion.
Each one needs.
Let's vote.
Okay. Everybody comfortable with that?
Mr. Hedges, each, each application, please.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the facade improvement grant for one ninety-nine South State. So moved. And for fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and six dollars and thirteen cents.
Sixty-three thousand.
Oh, sorry, backwards. Sixty-three thousand, sixty-hundred and sixty-nine dollars and zero cents.
Second.
Can you tell me more?
Sorry, it's a page or this.
Okay, can you tell me which of the proposals?
That's the original, it is the proposal that is in the packet. This handwritten estimate that goes along. The reason why it looks like it's higher is because it's seventy-five thousand, seven ninety-two, plus the nine thousand, one hundred for that top part, which gets you to the eighty-four thousand, eight ninety-two. That's seventy-five percent, makes it sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty.
Yeah? Okay, so we have a first and we have a second? If any other questions, comments or concerns? Trustee Pastrini, I don't want to cut you off.
No, I'm just, it's, it's, to approve this is going to go over the, what the budget was, and I have a concern with that. We haven't resolved it, and I, I can't vote for going over the budget as much as that is. So, you know, I understand and everybody wants to, you know, we're looking forward to moving in the community, but there's got to be some kind of a solution for me first, I can't.
Okay. Well, I have a first and a second on the table, I understand your concerns, but I am obligated to call a roll at this point. Trustee Kelly? Trustee Pastrini?
No.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Ma?
Aye.
Trustee Code?
Aye.
Trustee Porter?
Aye.
This motion passes with one no and one abstention. Okay, now let's move on to talk about blocks.
So the next project is for one ninety-nine South Maple, also known as Blocks Country Market. Total project is twenty-seven thousand, ninety-five. Recommendation from the BDC is seventy-five percent funding for twenty thousand, three twenty-one, twenty-five. You'll see drawings in the packet at the end. What they will be doing is putting a new stone front to the building, completely power, sand washing, sand blasting and repainting all of the metal siding on all parts of the building. And then the entrance, I think, there's some more, or is that, oh, the top. I guess. And so where it's been crushed by box trucks, they're going to fix that. Now, what's not included in here that they will also be doing, but a hundred percent on their own, it was explained as they're going to be redoing the parking on the side, correct, repairing it. I think, I just.
Entire parking, let's be entire parking. And they're also adding, they're learning that.
Yeah, so they're doing renovation as well that they did not include in here that they are doing all themselves. This is simply for the stonework you see, sand blasting, painting and fixing the front where box trucks have ruined over.
Can I, I can, can I ask a question? I believe in the facade program at one point or another, maybe it's still there, I'm trying to keep myself together. Anything off of State Street was automatic, was, was to not be approved, anything higher than fifty percent, is it not something that was in the program or am I making that up?
Can I just add?
Sure.
Yeah, no, I, that was a group break that we had originally come up with at the beginning, that I was very much in favor of, because I felt like the, the investment, the part of the investment should be corrected in those buildings that face State Street. Where I lost that part. And so that stipulation now is any project, as you remember, favorite Baptist church got seventy-five percent paint and plastic. I got seventy-five. They got seventy-five percent, so, and those are all off of State Street.
Maybe there's an opportunity there to bring that back. But then again, we just said.
So I will. The recommendation on the BDC for this project was.
Okay, so let's discuss this.
I have no questions, Tom, I'm ready to roll.
Anybody have accusations?
I, I do. First, if I could ask, whoever's, everyone that's sitting in the room that's underneath this, all I hear is all the talking, so it's hard to, to hear what the trustees are saying. So I have no idea if I'm being mean or rude to somebody down there, I don't know who you are. But all that talking, it's hard to, to follow what's going on with the board, so if, if we could do that, I'd really appreciate that. For the same thing, reason as before, I, I cannot spend funds that have not been budgeted. And at this point, with the last vote that we had, we've more than depleted the fund. And I think until there's a decision made as to how to fix it or what to do with it, right now, there is no money in that fund to award. So, just raising it a second time. Although I support blocks, I support all of it, I think it looks great, so I just want to put that on the record, a hundred percent in support of it, but there's no money.
Trustee Ma, is the siding that's on there now?
Steel.
Steel.
Steel side?
Yes, sir.
And it's being replaced with steel siding?
It's being pressure washed and repainted.
It's not being replaced?
It is not being replaced. It's being thrown in the side, there's metal on the whole part.
Did you see that?
I think it would be important to note that if we had started this conversation with, there is extra money because this project is under budget. It would have changed the tone of this conversation a little bit, because we wouldn't have been as concerned about our responsibility as board members as far as maintaining those tax dollars. Because a lot of trust is placed in us, that's why we're called trustees, right? And putting us in a position, as trustee Pastrini pointed out, where we are spending money that we don't know where it's coming from, that makes this conversation very difficult for us, because no matter how much we want to approve these projects and leave in this program, had we known that at the beginning, that would have changed the toner.
So at the beginning of the BDC portion of tonight's meeting, I did reference and had, Village Manager had just talked about the fact that this was part of the consideration was that projects are under budget, that there was extra ARP funds available, and that's why these were being presented in such a way. But I do hear what you're saying on that, I, my understanding, that's where the funding is coming. Were, were those extra federal dollars that come out of the.
But because we had to ask exactly what that was and where that came from, that's part of the reluctance, I think, for some of us.
I don't, I guess I'm, don't take this the wrong way, it, it's confused, because we covered the ARP, the, the excess ARP funds in the last meeting in preparation of this one. Trust, Village Manager Hedges brought up the fact that there was, there was money left over and he was going to get us an amount from, because we were, and then when we went through the bidding process of the North-South Water Connection, we accepted a bid that was substantially less. And so we knew that we had uncommitted funds, I realize that we all are. Well, no, we did, we, we did at, at last meeting, I mean, we can go back and refer to the tape, because he said it was somewhere around two hundred thousand.
Mr. Mayor, I could just make one suggestion. I think going forward, what we will do, trustee Porter, and trustee Pastrini, to your points, what we'll do is ask for the board to amend the budget first to, to a number, and then ask for, for whatever consideration for, for funding this. So that's something we can do and establish, how do you, we could have come tonight with a first motion to amend the budget to increase the budget from X to X and explain where the budget is coming from. That's something I think we should do in the future.
So I, I would. I think I'll say this, I, I understand where you're coming from, I agree, and I think a way that we could also, whether we have the budget, this is, we're talking because we're over budget right now, but I think even if we fast forward to next fiscal year, when we have a project that comes before us, whether it's facade, whether it's State Street, whatever that project may be, it would probably be a good idea for when that project gets presented to the board to say, here is the line in the budget that that would come out of, and we either have enough funds or we don't have enough funds. And if that line doesn't have enough, here are where we have excess funds that will help to fund it. That's what I'm hearing you say, is just the explanation, where would the money come from to fund it, rather than just a general, may or may not have funds, but we do, it would come from this line item, if we have extra funds, there is no financial concern, it kind of gives that due diligence.
Exactly, that is precisely.
Fair, I think that's fair, and I would expand it to any project.
Trustee, trustee Pastrini, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking, I mean, with the extra ARP funds, and I mean, honestly, I was at the last meeting, I don't remember that being discussed for the extra ARP. Because the first thing that would have blurted out of my mouth was, can we use those extra ARP funds to cover the overages in streetscape from the different things that we had to do? So just because we have money in ARP doesn't mean that we have to put it towards this, there may be other more pressing things that it should go towards. So even though we're looking at, and there's been conversation that ARP funds would, you know, excess would be able to cover that, not necessarily is that the best way that the village might want to direct those funds, so I just wanted to throw that in there too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other discussion on blocks, country market? I'll entertain a motion to award the facade improvement grant to one ninety-nine Maple Place Blocks Fresh Markets in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, or twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars, twenty-five cents.
I'll make that more.
Okay, first and second, any other questions, comments, concerns on the topic? Trustee Kelly? Trustee Pastrini?
No.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Ma?
Aye.
Trustee Code?
Aye.
Trustee Porter?
Aye.
Yeah, the motion passes with one no and one abstention. Okay, thank you all for coming tonight, one of, one of our more spirited discussions. Thank you all for your input, and we're going to have to set a meeting up pretty quick, just in case we can address some of the trustees concerns.
Can I add just one last piece?
Sure.
And I'll keep it brief, by now, I talk a lot, that's what, that's my, um, but just sort of deciding precedence, right, precedent is a legal term, right? There is no, if someone.
You just, you look it up.
Yeah, I did look it up. I've always looked at the BDC as sort of our recommendations to the village board, that we're more like a hedge fund manager for people in the industry. I still contend that we have full autonomy, they can choose those projects that most reflect the spirit of the mission that we're after. That just because someone brings an application, you do not owe them anything. No offense to the people that come, but unless it meets the mission that we have been directed to employ to the people in the industry, it, it should not be considered. So just because we have awarded funds to one project, that the next project comes in, does not meet those same merits, then in my view, we do not owe that to that company. My, my, all right, I'm going to watch the best of it.
Great day, thank you for entertaining my long-winded speeches.
Anyone else that wants to make a run for it can do so now. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I would ask for a motion to approve three variances to the subdivision requirements for the Hampshire ninety logistics park you have before you in your packet and agenda supplement assistant to the manager Josh Ray. We have with us tonight, three principals, John Cassidy, John, could you recognize yourself, please? Also Ken Franzese, and as well as David Hop. And I think you may have a couple other associates with you, if you'd like to introduce anybody else.
John, we're getting a turkey.
Thank you.
And Jesus Paulson.
And you all know Mike Zola, who's been representing this project for quite some time. So you also have before you a schematic of the layout of the park. There's really just three simple things tonight, and that is, they're all interconnected. One is that this is a longer than code cul-de-sac. And the reason for our, our limited length of cul-de-sacs in residential areas, it's really difficult to plow to the end of a cul-de-sac. If you have a three-hundred-foot cul-de-sac, you can plow to the end, there's just no place to put the stove, there's just houses everywhere. In this case, they're doing three things, all related. The first is that is, they're asking for a longer cul-de-sac than normal. That's been signed off on by Dave Stare, our street superintendent, because of plowing, and also by Chief Herman for radiuses, turning radiuses for emergency vehicles. Of course, Tim Paulson is with us tonight, did the engineering work. The other two variances, one is just for the right-of-way is, is a little less wide, because they're proposing to put a sidewalk on only one side of the street. And that also is, is because it's an industrial park, there's, there's only three buildings planned for the park. And they, the project, the current project, Vista Transportation, is not expected to have people walking, for example, in the entire park. So, so this is something that our engineering people have signed up on, that we have staff have signed up on in, in the planning and zoning commission on Monday. And Chairman Rock is here also, if you have questions.
Chairman Rock, anything to add?
I agree, that was a tough act to follow, and I. Did the committee look over impact of sidewalks just on one side of the street?
We did discuss that, the sidewalk wasn't supposed to be on the side of the street, again, with, like, there was four lots on the subdivision and three buildings.
It was a very short cul-de-sac. You expected foot traffic on sidewalks.
And by the way, that's, that's the same situation, Andrew Woods up north, the northern industrial park just has sidewalks on the side.
Can you explain to me the reduction of minimum width of the street right-of-way from eighty feet to sixty-six feet? I don't, I don't think a sidewalk is fourteen feet wide, so what is that, is the right-of-way the road itself, is that gas road that we're talking about, or what are we talking about that would be reduced from eighty to, that would be the new road going in the park? Tim, could you speak to that, please? Tim Paulson?
Yeah, sorry, Jay. Yeah, that's what's labeled gas road on the di- diagram, continuation of the gas road. So the, the right of, the road width is the same road width you would have, you know, required in the code. It's just the right-of-way width is reduced, so there's less parkway. In this case, they have storm sewer and water main in this right-of-way in addition to the road, because the sanitary sewer is not coming down gas road. The sanitary sewer they're accessing from the north end of the property. So you have fewer utilities in the right-of-way, and, you know, they will need an additional easement adjacent to the right-of-way for maintenance of utilities. But to answer your, I think your original question was for the road width. The road width will be, remain the same per the village standards.
Okay, so what's the reasoning for, or what's the need in drawing the reduction in the right-of-way? Is the road staying the same, sidewalks on one side, what is the need for the variance?
So, I can, I can jump in. So my name is Ken Franzese, so the, we're actually, the normal is eighty feet, we're actually giving you ninety-one feet. Twenty-four feet of that is actually being provided by a private easement instead of a public dedication. So what happens is it's, it's one of the rare win-win, where we actually take that difference in land area and sell it to the users who are going to be purchasing land in the park. And then it's their responsibility to maintain it instead of the village's. But you actually have ninety-one feet instead of eighty feet, which is the standard. So, so you're actually getting more area for the same width of roadway and the area for the utilities. Jason, did I miss anything on that?
Okay, well, what's the purpose of doing it? Why, why would you want to approach that?
So when buildings are built, they're required to provide certain areas of green area for grass. So this area, instead of it being lost to a publicly dedicated area that the village has to maintain, we can actually sell that to. we can actually sell that to a user, and then they use that easement area as part of their green area requirements. So the land is not lost, if you will.
So it allows for a larger building?
No, no, it's just like, problem is, they have flat lands that they can, other people can buy into and use. Remember, them come and put.
Mitigation bank.
Yeah, bank of.
So this area, instead of being lost to a public dedication, as a private easement, if I'm building on the particular site, technically it could allow a bigger building, that's one thing you can do, or you can do more parking or truck parking, but the required green area on the site, this counts towards it instead of it being lost.
It's also taxable.
And it's also taxable.
I'm just trying to. I'm not saying 91 feet anywhere on it. It's a thing, so.
Yeah. Go ahead, trustee Pastrini.
Is it clear when they purchase that property then, that they are responsible for it? Because normally it would be considered to be an easement or a right-of-way type of property that's maintained by the village. So when they purchase that property, are they advised and told that they're responsible all the way up to the street?
The survey that they get covers all the property that they're buying. Survey that they get will also show a private easement that they are responsible for maintaining. So it all comes out in documentation that they get when they purchase property. It's not, so it's concealed, but it's not shown on the plaque, because it's not a piece of land that's being dedicated to the city. It's not part of the street right-of-way. But on the survey that will be given to the purchaser, it'll show a private easement there for whatever utilities or uses are going to put in that easement, that that user is responsible for maintaining, and the user has to be taxed on it. Otherwise, why do all of that easement that's in the right-of-way, the wider easement, comes off the tax rules?
So it's no different than the utility easement in my case, that I've got 10 feet of space that I can't build anything on, but I have to mow it and I pay taxes.
Exactly, exactly.
Can I ask one more question then, because somebody brought up the fact about the driveway and plows? So where, is there a setup area, or I know Streets signed off on it, but where would the snow be plowed? Would that have to be onto somebody's property there? Because it's a long way to plow.
No, it'd go right onto the grass, they would just change the blade angle and plow it, plow right onto the grass.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's not like a residential where you have driveway, 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 this has very few driveways, so there's.
Okay, so can I all go there? All right, thank you.
Any other questions about the variances? Thank you for attending today, Mr. Rock. I will entertain a motion approving three variances to the subdivision requirements for the Hampton Nine Logistics Park.
So moved.
I have a permit in a second. Okay. Any other questions, comments, or discussions?
One question for village manager, Hedges, or EEI. Do we have any other industrial or commercial properties where we've done a reduction of easements so that it can be turned into a private easement similar to this?
I can't answer that question. I don't know all the developments and all the variances that we've done through the years.
So, Tim?
I don't know for sure. I know, you know, across the street, they had a similar variance for, you know, for sidewalk on one side of the street, but off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the right-of-way is on Flanagan.
Okay, first and second, Mr. Kelly?
Sorry, is it one vote for all three, or do we have to vote for each?
One goes for all three.
The motion goes for all three.
Okay.
If you want to.
No, that's the motion, I didn't know if we had to go, like if each variance was considered separately by zoning, and that's how we.
If you would like it that way, we can do it that way.
It could be done that way. It's your discretion.
But the motion on the table is for all three.
Sure, that's what I heard.
We can rescind the motion.
I'm just asking for clarification, because like for ordinances, we have to separate, we had to do it for the different applications, that's why I'm just asking.
Trustee Kelly? Trustee Pastrini?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Matt?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Foder?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You certainly don't need to stay if you don't want to, you put your.
By the way, they all had dinner at the Copper Brule, they told me. And make sure you fill up at a gas station on the way out of town.
Thank you, anyone want?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would mention that the next two items are related to the same property. First one is, we would ask for your consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property at 148 Washington Avenue from B1 Central Business District to B3 Service Business District. And I'm going to ask Josh Ray to discuss this, we've provided his voices back a little bit, rusty today, so he might have a voice.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So the property owners at 148 Washington have asked for a rezoning in order to accommodate a business use that they would like to do at this commercial property, which is to have a contractor, a construction office on that first floor, that requires B3 zoning. And then the second item is related to that, it's an accessory structure that they would like to have a shorter setback for, related to that construction, a contractor company. So in addition to that business, they do intend to rent out additional office space on the bottom floor of that primary structure. And then in the second floor, they currently have residential use, which is permitted in both B1 and B3, so they're perfectly legal there, which they would intend to continue. I think the Zopis are here tonight to speak.
They're not, Josh.
They're not, okay. So if you have any other questions about the project, I'd be happy to answer, I've spoken quite a bit with Kelly Zoppi about this.
I would just add that this is, this was all part of, Mr. Robinson, you remember rezoning all the Washington Street, and this was already B1, but it was anticipated when they bought this property that the problem would be changed. And so this is tidying up everything, and this will be the last piece of this project.
Just what's your planning and zoning as well, Mr. Rock?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion about this?
Nothing major, there was no public comments on the issue. We did make the recommendation that he said by the. Property to the east of the parking lot, there is a structure. Keeping that variance to the rear half of the property allows for the development. Has been by the decision, but it also keeps the front half of the property, you can tidy.
Okay, is that one word?
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Affidavit of notification for the neighboring residents, are they all, are they required just to provide comments, sign off? Or I just see that they were notified, but.
Right, there's also, there's also a sign on the property that's all.
Okay, was there any communication received by any residents, any issues or concerns?
I thought we had to send something out with him on. It was sent, it was sent out, what he's asking is.
That's the, that's the affidavit, and it's in the packet, I just didn't know if they were required to sign off or as a resident, or if we got any feedback from them that there were.
Just notification.
Okay.
And then we need to have a public, we don't need to have a public hearing because this is a variance, correct?
No, there was a public.
Oh, there was.
Okay, Mr. Rock told you, no one appeared after receiving notification.
Okay.
Trustee Pastrini, I think I heard you.
Yeah, well, one is, I just wanted to make sure this, just where exactly it's at, it's across from the cave, right?
Correct, yes.
And I know there are some residents there. Some houses, correct? No, no, I mean, in, across the street or next to it, I, I'm trying to picture exactly where it is, I know there were two buildings there and the post office.
The Massillon Rescue, there's this building and then the village parking lot.
Okay, so that's not going to be. Okay. Are we, are we just talking, I mean, because I know we're moving up to a vote, are we just talking about the rezoning at this point?
We're just talking about the rezoning of B3, and then the second, the second one would be the side yard, and the third one would be not related to this. So these next two ordinances, 13 and 14, will be the zoning and then the variance.
All right, so right. So right now, we're just talking about rezoning, so if I want to discuss the variance, I'll wait till we get that part, correct?
Well, we've already kind of approached into the subject, so why don't we just get all the discussion out of the way, and then we'll call a roll for each vote.
Okay, well, if I could continue, then, my biggest concern is, as I'm looking at this, is we're going from a piece of property, I don't know if it's all grass back there currently right now, but you're talking, I mean, three quarters of this property right now is open space, I'm assuming grass, it's porous, it's someplace for the rain to go. What we're looking to do here, or what they're looking to do here, is to put a large structure, which is actually much, a little bit bigger, considerably bigger than the structure that's there right now, and then a driveway that will cover the rest of it for a huge amount for trucks and stuff getting in and out. And I'm concerned about, you know, runoff for the water, there's no place for it to go anymore. And so I didn't know if that's taken into consideration at all, I mean, just as for being a green environment, is to have as little asphalt as we can, and it is, it's a, we're moving it to be, you know, to a B, from B1 to a B3, but it's still a community street where people live on it as well. So it is, it's a mixed area. So the lack of porous land with all of these changes is a little bit concerning for me. That's, that's all.
A question for Mr. Paulson, in that vein, since this is a commercial property, does EEI look at stormwater effects on construction plans or bids for commercial properties throughout the village? And have you reviewed it for this property as proposed?
We have not reviewed this property, but we would generally look at requirements of the stormwater ordinance for any commercial development.
But that hasn't been done.
Trustee Kelly, the project will have to submit a building permit and application, go through the whole process of approval before the building's constructed. Just because we approved the variance doesn't mean that the building department is going to approve the structure, because then they would, that would trigger them to go through all the.
Okay, so that's when the review would happen, a stormwater.
Does that make sense, trustee Pastrini?
Yeah, okay.
Just because we approve it doesn't mean that that exempts them from going through all the normal process of building permit and all that other evaluation.
So they're just showing us what they intend to do, and that's why they would need an, or, okay.
And if, and if what they decide to build doesn't conform, they're going to have to submit something that does conform where they can't build it, variance or none.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
The other question I have from Mr. Rock, you stated that the zoning, building zoning committee, commission approved the rear variance. In their plan, it also looks like it's a five-foot offset from the neighboring parking lot variance.
Yes.
For parking lot, is that also a variance that was approved and discussed, and that passed as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so as discussed, there are going to be two roll calls here for two different ordinances, 13 and 14 of the year 2022. And so I will start by entertaining a motion for the rezoning, which is 22-13, rezoning from B1 to B3. I have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments about the rezoning? And we'll now call the roll, Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Pastrini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Matt? Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Ms. Foder?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Now I will now call the roll or entertain a motion to approve ordinance 22-14, an ordinance granting the variance in the side yard setback for an accessory building at 148 East Washington Avenue. Okay, okay. So I have a first, I have a second. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kelly? Questions? I'm going to call a roll now, sorry. Mr. Kelly? I'll do this, it's going to be fun. Ms. Pastrini?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
No.
Mr. Foder, or Ms. Foder, sorry, sorry, I used your. Okay, the motion passes. No sign, holy, holy, I have to vote, what in the world am I going to do?
Three, four, five, no.
Oh, my goodness.
There were six.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness, I had to raise my hand to read this. I'm going to drag this out a little bit. I'm going to.
There are six.
There are six of us, there's one that's online, you're keeping score in the state. Ms. Pastrini's online, there are six trustees.
Do you guys know the history of this place?
Yes.
You do know it?
Sure.
What happened?
I don't know what you're referring to.
The old mayor Schmidt.
Yeah.
Knocked down a garage.
Knocked out the garage, I have to.
And they could not build another building on that property.
Is there a particular reason as to why, or because they do?
I don't know, but that's what the whole history was, that that.
My guess, my guess, if it had, I'm surely being speculative, but if it's anything like any of the other zoning in that area, they probably wanted to put it where it was, and it was probably outside of the, where it was supposed to be.
It was too close to the lot line. It required setbacks from that point forward, and then modified, and the garage where it was originally constructed was too close to the lot line. So the owner, Mr. Dumblin, was prohibited from reconstructing the garage in exactly the same spot, because the garage had been leveled. Had the garage been damaged partially and rebuilt, it could have been, it would have been allowed to stay there.
And had Mr. Dumblin applied for variance like the Zopis have done, gone through that process, he probably could have put it back.
No, he would have got shot down.
But doesn't it make a difference about how much you can put on a lot? The size of the lot?
I think the lot is plenty big enough, and if you look at an aerial view comparatively to Nextdoor and all the other properties along Washington Avenue, I think that there's more green space on that lot than the one right next door.
Well, they're limited in terms of the size of that building based on the square footage of the lot and the square footage of the backyard. And that will come up when they apply for a permit with plans and presented to the building department.
That's why I asked about the stormwater study and the impact that they will do on a commercial property, because this is a commercial property, so they're going to have to go through EEI and all of that.
So.
Accruals and permits.
With all the discussion, knowing that they're going to have to go through all the other checks and balances, my vote is going to be yes. Therefore, the motion passes. Thank you, four to three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, we would ask for your consideration of an ordinance granting a variance to the Community Graphics Regulations to allow additional signing at Road Ranger. As you all know, this is a business that's been in the village for quite some time, in fact, they were annexed in the village, they were built before the village was next up. They're updating their signs. You might recall that this board, as well as the zoning board appeals and the planning commission involved, said, we should eliminate these variances, we should change our code to accommodate these signs. Well, we did that for the height of the signs, but it's really hard to anticipate the square footage of all these signs for all the outbuildings at all. So in this case, we are asking that they receive their variance. I believe the zoning commission made the same comment again, and asked that we not bring another variance back to them, but instead of text amendment, we would accommodate these kinds of variances. So we receive that suggestion on the square footage, so we will now address that. They made that same comment.
Didn't we just amend the variance so that we didn't get.
For the higher end.
We never did anything about square. Those are the signs that stay. We talked about how big the signs were, too.
No.
It wasn't just, no, it wasn't just height, we also talked about how large they were, there's.
Absolutely, let's let Josh address that, please. We did make some changes. Go ahead, Josh.
The truck stop area is in what's called the interchange overlay district, so the amendment that you all did, I think it was actually back in 2020 now, was related to the highway identification signs, which are the 100-foot tall and extremely large square foot. All of the truck stops wanted larger ones and taller ones, so there was an amendment to that specific type of sign. These are wall signs that are just on the faces of buildings, the code only allows for one wall sign per streetfront exposure, and that was not discussed back a year and a half ago or so, when the board, planning and zoning commission and board changed the highway identification sign provisions.
So when we had the variance, sorry, if we had the, when we had the variance for the Thorntons that was originally being discussed, there was a lot of sign variance that was done there, I thought that's ended the ordinance because of that.
That's actually the one that we amended afterward, but we only amended, as Josh, you did exactly what Josh just described.
So then the Thorntons one, we did a variance like this?
Yes.
And now we're doing the same kind of?
Yes. But we're not gonna do it again. We're gonna come with a text. We're gonna try to come up with square footage. What I'm saying is, square footage is very difficult to anticipate on these buildings. So you've asked us for an order, we'll give you one.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, and I thought we had, but now.
Thank you.
After this one, we're going to-
Aye. And these signs are gonna be mounted on the building. Correct. Not sticking up. Who cares how big they are? Put the whole side of it. All right. With that, I will entertain, I will entertain a motion. Okay. Twenty-two dash fifteen, an orange variant, granting variance to the Community Graphics Regulations to allow additional signage at Road Ranger. Okay, I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kelly, can you pass your vote, please?
Aye.
Ms. Paulistri?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Okay, I don't get to vote this one. All right, the motion passes. Thank you. We would ask your consideration of a motion to authorize a third payment of seventy-two thousand eight seventy-five point five five to Camp County Escubating for the Water Connection project. This would bring the total payments to four hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and four thousand dollars and seventy-nine cents to date. The project is on schedule, we're getting daily updates. There'll be pressure testing line tomorrow. And Tim, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't, I don't have anything to add. It's on budget and on schedule, as you mentioned.
And all the documentation is in here. Any questions, comments about this project? And we'll entertain a motion to authorize a third payment in County Escubating for the Water Connection project.
Oh, second.
For a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kelly, can you pass your vote, please? Ms. Paulistri?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Coates?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Okay, I don't get to vote. All right, next. Next item, we'd ask your consideration of an authoriz- motion to authorize a second payment of eleven thousand five twenty-eight and twenty-five cents to IHC Construction for Route Seventy-two Water Main Replacement Project. That would be the final payment, bringing the total to ninety-two thousand four ninety-six. Any other questions on this, this project?
Whatever happened when they left the Buffalo Box exposed, that froze overnight.
They had to make it on. And they did. Any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion to authorize a second payment to IHC Construction for the Route Seventy-two Water Main Replacement Project. And first. And then a second. Trustee Kelly?
Aye.
Trustee Paulistri?
Aye.
Trustee Robinson?
Aye.
Trustee Matt?
Aye.
Trustee Coates?
Aye.
Trustee Fodor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, oh, go ahead, Mr. Hedges. Monthly report time.
Okay, Chief Thompson, would you like to briefly discuss the incident report, please?
Nothing out of the ordinary, it's relatively a quiet month, with the exception of traffic seems to be up a little bit, and I'm sure it'll be down a little bit following instructions for next month.
Thank you. Any questions about the police report?
Chief, if I could ask, there was a huge incident that happened today with the sheriff making a significant arrest. Are you able to talk about that at all?
We were not involved, and that was yesterday.
Okay.
I ninety.
Okay. It just, it just close proximity then, okay, thank you.
Ms. Lyons, financial report.
So I have presented the one-month financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. You'll notice that probably the most encouraging thing is, from the village's standpoint anyway, is income tax receipts are very high, nears to the budget, and higher than the IML had projected for us to receive on a per capita basis. So both the business income tax and individual income taxes are up as compared to the project. Everything else is pretty standard. I did note some exceptions as far as like street capital outlay. We had the same situation that we had last year with purchasing some equipment outright and then funding it through debt, loan, loans of future, so we're working on that now. So if you have any questions, everything looks pretty, pretty standard as of one month into our system.
Just one, with the new ERP implementation that we had, will that allow you to have seasonality figured into the budget, or is it still gonna-
So actually, thank you for reminding me. If you look at the budget with respect to real estate taxes specifically, I have those budgeted fifty percent to be received in July to follow everyone's tax payments due June, and then in October, following that September payment. So I'm not really a hundred percent sure if the ERP will do that automatically. I think it's gonna take a lot of work, just like it takes a lot of work here. On the positive side, I believe that the reports that we get out of the system will help us, rather than all the manual work we have to do, you know, on our side, because it's now just not automatically one-twelfth of, of the budget, even in our manual reports. Because the reports that you receive that have the green, those are all manually done. That's not something that comes out of our system.
It does have a budgeting module.
Yeah, the system actually has a budgeting module, but it's very rudimentary, let's just put it that way.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have the main engineering report. Do you have any questions for Mr. Paulson or Mr. Hedges about the engineering report?
I have one, absolutely. It's under Central Business District's streetscape improvement. Concrete paving preparation is underway. Is the actual surface, the street surface gonna be concrete, or is it gonna be asphalt? I don't remember the specifics in the plan.
The festival block itself will be concrete.
It will be concrete.
Both intersections will be asphalt.
Okay. Thank you.
One question for either dealing with Route Seventy-two, the State Street project. Even today, there is an article in Daily Herald about the strike with the quarry workers, and how that's affecting I dot work, and that's why a lot of projects, especially like Forty-seven, isn't getting mentioned. Do we see that, or does the, does EEI or do our construction contract companies see that having an effect on the delivery date of the projects that buy their rights?
I'll speak to that, and the answer is, at this point, no, quarry operators are not a problem. At this point, we have all the rock and equipment that we need. If the strike were to expand to the highway operators, that would shut all the jobs down. But right now, it's actually helping us. There's a big project in Naperville that Alliance has. Another one, I believe, in the Czech Charles. Several major public works projects have been shut down because of the quarry strike, quarry operator's strike. But the road operators are the ones that are probably six dollars per hour more, and that's, that's the, that's the wages that they're striking for, and they're trying to get them to go out, but their contract isn't up for two more years. So it's, at this point, we don't think it's likely to need to do the contractors that they allow. And, and right now, the Alliance contractors are, they're not full-time with benefits, so it's conceivable that they will continue to work to earnings. But if, they will now, but if the operators go out, road operators, that shuts everything down, including I dot. But at this point, both, in both project meetings, yesterday, we discussed that instead of not doing all the project. Thank you, yes. Okay. Are we satisfied that we discussed that enough? Because if we are, we can move on to the regular accounts payable personnel. Anyone have any questions about the accounts payable personnel this month? And I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in amount of four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Paulistri?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Coates?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Motion passes, next. We have the regular accounts payable, a big number. Ms. Paulistri, what do you have?
Ah, hold on, page three. Page, ah, page three. Just one question, it was the mosquito abatement management service, and I was just curious if we have started spraying yet?
So we paid this contract in two pieces, and no, I do not believe we've had any spraying done to date.
Okay.
They don't like all you, right?
President, in contact with him, I, it'll, they're gonna spray before the Fourth of July, and I believe he's always in contact with Dave every year for the tablets they drop down in the sewers. They come and they drop.
Pissed.
Well.
So for those of you that don't know, trustee Coates also doubles as the mosquito man.
Yeah.
He's the one that authorizes all spraying that goes on in the village.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
Mr. President, I just have one last one, on page eleven. Second thing, it was paramount fence, and that was for fifty-six-ten. And I just wanted to say, is that, is that the, what was, what was done according to the contract with, on that Rinne Street with the railroad?
So I can answer that. This is a proposal for the fence that is being put up there. This was the village's responsibility within the agreement with the, with the railroad. So this is fifty percent, and the second piece will be paid upon completion of the fence.
Okay, so that's, that's up closer to the railroad then, that's to block the railroad, is that what that fence one is?
The fence will be right up against the parking lot versus up against the railroad.
Okay, okay. That's all, thank you.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable for eight hundred and forty-six. What?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Page fourteen, permit over, Peter?
Yes. So when the permit fee was calculated for the Stanley storage facilities, it was done incorrectly by Safe Built, and so we are refunding the amount to Stanley due to their power payment.
Is it like computer-based, how did we, or how did they?
So I believe that there were certain, yeah, it, it, it's a very complicated formula, and it's based on several different pieces. And so I believe that a portion of the permit was calculated in error on a cubic foot basis rather than on a square foot, square footage basis.
And this is like a forty-eight thousand dollar permit, this is pretty-
It was a giant permit.
It's a pretty large amount, that's why I was wondering, it seems like it's pretty obvious. Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of eight hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. And first. I have a second. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Paulistri?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mr. Coates?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Okay, I believe that's the last one, I need to talk other than of yours, I think we got them. All right, court committee reports, Business Development Commission.
Thank you for the consideration of the two beautification project, or soccer projects tonight. It sounds like we're getting another application, so as soon as we get that, that'll be considered at the next BDC meeting, I'm assuming, which is in July. And then, Mr. Hedges, is there any updates that you'd like to give on, on business develop, businesses in town, new business?
I can give you a brief update. Say that the, it appears that Mr. Lazar is getting close to breaking ground on the strip mall. Construction trailers down there, the brick wall is taken down. There's at least one easement issue that I'm aware of, but I think that project's a little bit long. I spoke to a young lady this week who will be meeting with the mayor next week. She would like to open up a gaming, wine bar, more of a, more of a, forgetting the term now, it's a, it doesn't have to be a full, a full bar, it could just be like a coffee shop, wine and game. So that's one of the leases that, I believe there are three leases that are now assigned for that project. And at least two restaurants and an athletic location. So those, that's on that side. I'm gonna think downtown.
We have a new Italian restaurant this-
Yeah, we have a new Italian eatery, Alvano, Alvano pizzas. I have a problem, I feel like there should be a Z in this somewhere, but there's not, Alvano's. And so they're, they have leased property just north of the drugstore. So they'll be opening a bakery there. I think that's, I think that's everything. Yeah, on the industrial side, nothing uses less.
The business owner for Alvano came to the BDC, introduced himself, had a good conversation with what he's looking to do, and the other most items on the BDC agenda were tabled for the future discussions. We spent a good amount of time considering it.
Thank you, members of the beautification committee for being here tonight. Really appreciate you guys having a good Thursday night. Let's take a moment. Come on, it's a beautification.
Oh, we have beautification.
You don't get, you don't get credit for being here, you had to be here. Public relations.
Right, you get paid twice. I appreciate you being here too, Mr. Hedges.
Our PR meeting that last Thursday, getting our topics together for the newsletter, sent it over to Mr. Jose, and he's written on that. We've got our first copy, so that's nice. Our next meeting will be July fourteenth at six thirty.
About works.
No meetings scheduled.
Budget?
No report, but before we move on to new business, can I ask, can we get a, even if it's at the end of the meeting, an update on the chickens?
Actually, that's kind of funny. I was gonna bring that up under new, new business if you, if we could.
That's fine, I will, I will defer to you, I just wanted to make sure that we had an update on that sometime tonight, so.
Oh, yes.
I don't care when, okay.
Okay, new business. I defer to trustee Robinson.
Sure, thank you. I, I had requested that we have a discussion in light of recent events. Trying to, I don't know what phrase it, basically, the Evolley incident really, personally and professionally, got to me, as you know, I'm a teacher. But the Evolley incident is something that happens almost on a daily basis, whether in a school, not in a school, in a grocery store, in a movie theater, in a shopping mall, you name it. I can tell you, as, as a teacher, and it wasn't, and it wasn't like this twenty years ago, but now, every time I'm in my school, I know, in my school, I know wherever it is, I'm constantly looking out the window. My focus is outside the classroom as well as inside the classroom quite a bit these days. Special events, when you have the kids outside for special activities, recess. I'm more watching someone around my surroundings rather than watching my students. So needless to say, that incident really, it, it broke something in me. I can't watch the reports coming out of Texas. I do see a little bit of what the nation as a whole would like our government to do, and how little our government is willing to take a stand either way on a federal level. And I felt being in the position that we are as elected officials who are responsible for the well-being of every citizen in this town, especially our children, know way too much. They know exactly what to do when, think back to your days in school. You have drills for a tornado, or possibly a- You have drills for a tornado, or possibly an air raid, if growing up, growing up in the cardboard era, get under your desk, you know? These kids know exactly what to do now when a shooter comes into the school. They're six years old. I feel as a village board, we can at least take a stance on what is going on today, or or we can do something. I don't know what that something is, which is why I wanted to add this to the agenda as a discussion on what we can do to show that we're not okay with this. And personally, this is my, my personal feeling, there is no reason that anybody needs to own a weapon that can do the type of damage that it does that you saw in Texas a couple of weeks ago where you needed to get DNA evidence from family members to identify dead children. There is no reason for that. That is my personal opinion, though. And I know as a village, we don't have the authority to, to ban something like that, but as a village board, we do have the authority to take a stance and to, I feel we have a responsibility to do something. And again, I don't know what that something is, so I, I wanted to put it on the agenda as a discussion to hear what other minds are thinking. Obviously, I'm in the education world, but I'm also in this, in the parent world too. Like I have a first grader next year and a kindergartner. And that scares the hell out of me, that I'm, and I've heard it all, I've heard it all, let's arm the teachers. No, let's not do that. Please don't do that. Let's have one way in, one way out of the village. No, let's, no. Those aren't our decisions to make, but our, our decision as a village, our, our stance as a village can be made, like, I, I think we should as a board not be, have some stance on this. It's not okay here. And I think if more villages and more towns and more municipalities step up and have a stance with this, then maybe we'll start to get somewhere with something changing. Because we already know those twenty-two people that were just slaughtered in Texas, nothing's gonna change. And if it does change, it's gonna be minimal. Think back to Sandy's Hook ten years ago, what changed? More mass shootings.
Mr. Mayor.
I, I just wanted to have the discussion, what can we do? What, what are your thoughts?
Well, I would, you know, I think, trustee Robinson and I talked about it, and village manager Hedges, and I'm sure Mr. Ray looked into what, and our attorney as well, looked into what we were legally allowed to do and what we're not. And the state statute is very clear in relation to home rule versus non-home rule, versus what's covered by the state statute. So it's very clear, what, what we are able to do as a municipality is very minimal, as far as any bans go. We can do a non-binding resolution in support of one cause or another, or in, in, in in opposition of things that are going on, but really realistically, that's all we can do, other than utilize, like I said, a non-binding resolution, it's, it's a scary, it's a scary situation nowadays. My wife's a teacher, my son is five years old, going into kindergarten. I worked in the schools for seventeen years and you used to be able to go to work and not be scared. I guess that's a risky run anywhere, right? But now it's, seems to be more concentrated, anytime you hear, hey, heck, my office and the other, the school was upstairs with no way in or out, other than my office, right? And then all of a sudden you hear a noise downstairs and you go, oh god, what now? You know, and it was a chair dropping or whatever, but you know, before it was just, a kid dropped his books, and now you're like, oh no, now what? So I, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't, I don't know which way to, to go with it, because again, the statute is very clear on what we're allowed to do as a municipality. I'm, I'm, I'm up for any, anyone's thoughts or processes on this board? Including Ms. Palastrey, I know there's a delay. I don't want to cut you off either.
No, I'm listening.
I would like to point out that we do have the option to, as a village, request that our elected officials above us at the state level start pushing for some actual change. And I would like to see a resolution from our village board, as well as when you are sitting in meetings with Mr. Keiger, when you are sitting in meetings with Mr. Cyberson. I want to hear that Hampshire said, we don't want this here. We want to see real change. My youngest child is a sophomore, I have two more years of every day, wondering if he's gonna come home. I have ten years until the retirement schools, wondering every day, am I gonna come home tonight? Or is my kid gonna have to marry me? I invite anybody who would like to come. When school starts again in August, you are welcome. You are welcome to sign in as visitor, incident in my classroom, observe, and then talk to my students and ask them what this does to them. Why do you think kids don't want to plan for their future? Because they don't believe they'll have money. That's what we're doing to our kids. Why is the suicide rate so high? Because they don't believe they have a future. Why develop any resilience or skills? It doesn't matter, because they never know if they have a way to go home. And if you don't think that's the case, and you have a child in school, you need to go talk to them. Ask them what their friends say. This is a very serious issue. As a gentser, this was not an issue for me. But as I was sitting in my very first two years teaching and watching Columbine unfold and being horrified, disgusted, couldn't believe what I was seeing, and yet we see it happen again and again and again and again. And I'm sorry, our thoughts and our prayers aren't getting the job done.
Well, again, with this being said, this is not, this conversation shouldn't be construed as anything negative against any of the school districts that are, that are in our area. Our school district three hundred is a very good partner with our police department. I think that they do, again, I've been on the other side of it, so I think that they do a better job than some of, some of the other school districts that you see in the news as far as security goes. I think that they put a lot of money into security. That, that's not to say that things can't happen, but I also, I just don't want this taken out of context, just to permit it to suggest that we're suggesting anything ill about any of our schools in the area, because I think they're doing a good job, however.
The problem, as you originally laid out, is that we do not have the authority to make those changes.
Correct.
I didn't bring this up as a, as a slight on any school district, we're doing what we can as a school district, I'm doing what I can as a teacher, as, as you are, and we're, and this isn't a, this isn't a government, one hundred percent government problem. This is a problem with across mental health, parenting, social media, bullying. This isn't just a gun problem. This is a societal problem that has many aspects to it, but government does play a role in what can help to resolve this process. I think the federal government cannot make a, a law that says you need to be a better parent to your child, that teaches them right from wrong. That's your job as a parent, that you take on when you have a child. They can do something with a, with an AR-15 that makes it impossible for you to get one. So we do play a part in this. We are not the entire solution to this. I just feel we need to take a stance. If, if that's the least we can do, then, then that's what we can do.
So how would you guys like to move forward?
I don't know, that's why I wanted to have the discussion. And, and I'm fine with, with us sitting on it for a while and revisiting it, but I, I don't want it to, we talked about it, okay, let's wash our hands. This isn't going away. Uvalde, Texas is gonna happen again next year, we're gonna watch it on the news again.
Yeah. I think what you brought up just now, it's something that I've been thinking about as well, in particular, like I'm a root cause man, right? I think what we see in the news, what these events have happened are an end result of our cause. And so I wonder, when you ask what can we do as a village, what can we do for our younger community to give programs or opportunities for them to be able to have a place to come together and talk about things, or to know that they can go ask a school resource officer for help if they're getting, you know, they're, they're facing things that turn that way. Because we didn't have this issue. We also didn't have social media. We also didn't have a lot of things that kids have where they can't turn up. And, you know, so I know this isn't in particular to the gun or anything like that, but when I look at what can we do as a, as a community or, or as a society, if somebody doesn't have a good home structure, can we, as a community, provide programs to give them something to do, or that provide them an outlet or a safe place to go have a conversation of things that are on their mind, right? And partner with students to do that. I, I look at like those type of actionable things that maybe we can do. We can't do anything, our, our federal, even our state officials, federal officials can do what you're hoping, or it sounds like you're hoping.
Right. And that's one, that's a really good thought, though. I mean, just think about what we just had a, a very spirited conversation about an hour ago. We're, we're putting money into fixing up our buildings, why can't we put money into helping our residents with things that they need, you know, fixing them up if they need that.
Like a residence assistant.
Some, I mean, that's a great idea.
Or just paying a host of space that people can come to for a conversation, or I'm sure that there are more than a couple of people that have similar things that concern them. And if they had a place that they could go to have a conversation and find a community of support.
Right.
Maybe that's, I'm just trying to figure out what can we do as a, that should make.
Because Hampshire is the people in this room, the people this time, it's not the building, it's not the Rose Garden building, it's the people in that building, right?
Hey, you know, we had talked at the very beginning of trying to get together with our other elected officials on a regular basis, and I think that we fell short on that. I mean, I think that we've all had our good relationships with our elected officials, you know, and the, you know, the different boards throughout town, but I don't think that we've taken as much of an active role as I think that we initially thought we should have. I saw, maybe this is an opportunity for us to work with them and try to get something together.
It is, and I also, I want to be clear on this also, this is not a trustee Robinson wants to take your gun away issue, that, that's not even on my radar. I, I have no qualms about how you want to responsibly live your life. The problem I have with, with it is, if, when you take that weapon, it, you need to be only, I'm not talking about a shotgun, you, you know what I'm talking about, the assault rifle, and you're bringing it into a school and you ruin lives. That's the issue I have, that's. So it's not, I don't want, don't misconstrue this as I want people to give up their guns online, but don't misconstrue it as that, please. I, I'm all for constitutional rights and your right to keep and bear arms if you so choose to do so, as well as every other right that you have protected in the Constitution. This is going way too far. This is Columbine was twenty years ago, about, give or take. This is going way too far. When you're burying twenty-six-year-olds, this is going way too far.
Trustee Palastrey, did you have a there?
You know, the, in, in listening and thinking, the one thing that maybe this board could do would open up a dialogue, maybe take the lead to have a sit-down with the members of the township, the library, the parks, I mean, to bring everybody into a room, and the schools, as well as the police department, to maybe talk about violence and bullying and mental health. And those are three issues, I think, that are there. I caution, and I know trustee Robinson said, I'm not looking to take people's guns away. The perception will be that you're looking to, to take the guns away from people, and even though that you've said that, that's the concern. We are in a rural area, and I know, you know, when we had an issue where we were gonna have people, you know, coming in and stomping through our neighborhoods when we were having all that violence, you know, there was a comfort knowing that so many of my neighbors did have weapons to protect, because they were afraid what was gonna happen and people coming in. So I think, you know, if, if there is a perception that we're going to go beyond a discussion like that, you're gonna end up filling rooms with people that aren't necessarily from Hampshire, that could be from all over the state and Wisconsin. So I, I caution the way we would term anything, but I, I, I would be open to a dialogue and to bring everybody together just to have an open conversation.
I agree with you, but I think we are past the point of being politically correct about all of this.
Then what are you gonna do? I mean, what do you think to do then? I mean, you're saying you're, you're not taking anybody's guns, but yet you're saying that we've gone beyond the opportunity to talk, we need to act.
No, 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 I don't, I don't.
What, what action are you looking to have happen?
I'm saying, if, if that's the perception that someone wants to come into the room with, then that's, that's their prerogative. I mean, we've gone past, we, we can't sit around and let this keep happening. It's, it's my whole point, so if, if, if it wants to keep being the, the Second Amendment argument, you're coming to take my guns, we're past that. That, that was dealt with two hundred and fifty years ago. I mean, let's, let's, let's move past that and have, have a discussion that is going to get us to a solution to this epidemic. It's, it's just, I hate to, I hate to equate this to, to racial issues, but let's, let's, you know, if we're not gonna have the hard conversation, nothing's gonna change.
Well, I think that, I don't think that anybody's inaccurate in their thoughts or opinions of this. I think that this is a pretty deep subject. I think that we're all committed to having conversations about it. I think your, your suggestion in the beginning of, let's take a, let's take a minute to think about it, and let's come back, but let, let's come back to the board with some ideas of how we think that we can do something of meaning about it within our authority. That's, that's my thought process. If the board's comfortable with that, we can chew on it for a while and bring it back up on a later meeting. Otherwise, we can be talking about it. Now, I'm certainly not trying to cycle anybody's opinion or end this conversation.
No, agreed, and I, I think it would be good for us to sit on this and think for a couple of weeks. But I, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not gonna let this go. I mean, there's, there's things that we all have let go in the past, and I'm not, enough is enough with this. I'm not, the fear on my mind is Hampshire's on the news and we're all saying, I didn't think it was gonna happen here. Because guess what they say in every damn town that this happens? I didn't think it was gonna happen here.
Should we have room for our senators for that specific point?
We do.
Are we prepared?
Well, I don't.
Because if we don't talk about it, then we're saying we accept that as a real possibility.
So what, what, I guess, I guess questions that I have about our preparedness, right? Again, I'm not, not in the manner of putting, here to put kids in the ground. I'm talking about our, like our response plan and action plan and stuff like that, things that, like tangible things that we have, that the village is a part of, like the, the chief, the chief of this department participated, active shooter drills alongside the fire department and that kind of stuff, the regular drills and that kind of stuff. Is that, is that anything at all that this board would be interested in knowing that goes on as far as?
I have no doubt that the chief and our entire police department and fire department are very well versed in what to do and how to handle some, one of these situations. God forbid it ever gets to that point. I have full confidence in them. I know there were some issues regarding the, the mask rollback back in February, March. I had one hundred percent confidence in our police department that they were gonna keep those students in those schools safe, and they did. And so that's not an issue at all with their plan or how they're, how, how they're gonna react to a certain situation, they know exactly. how, how they're going to react to a certain situation. They know exactly what they're doing. You guys are, you guys are more than trained to handle this stuff. I, I am not concerned with that at all. And, and I trust them. That, and that is the oath that you guys take as a police officer that you guys know what you're doing. So I, I don't worry about that at all.
I, I, I was just asking just for sake of the conversation.
I think perhaps what trustee Robinson is looking for is more, how do we as a community address this so to prevent this from happening here? I don't think it's about what do we do if it happens here.
And, and maybe it's not even going to prevent anything from happening here or the next town over or the next state over. Maybe it won't, but we've seen for the past 23 years since Columbine, what nothing gets you. It gets you more of the same. At a more frequent rate. Now, go home and look up mass shootings. Just Google a list of this. This week, we'll take up the whole page before you have to click next to get to the next page. And oh, it's scary.
Trustee Paul Street.
Yeah, I just want to throw out, I mean, I spent 10 years in law enforcement and it was during the Columbine days. So you, you hear on the news what goes on and obviously it's horrendous. What you don't hear so much of is all the ones that are diverted that don't happen because law enforcement was there. And I was part of some of those where I know that because of chatter and things going on, law enforcement stepped in, schools stepped in, and things were averted. And, you know, so it's not 100%, obviously. And, and for something like this, I know we want 100%, so not a single person dies. But, but the fact is, is our law enforcement is doing what they need to do. The schools are doing what they need to do. And there's, there are so many that have been averted because of that action that has taken place and because of the dialogue that's been opened. And then just things like, you know, if you hear something, see something, report it. And maybe that's a campaign that we need to, to talk about and maybe with the kids since it's in the schools. But any adult can come in from 90, stop off where we've got a toll plaza right there and come into the town. They could be from Canada. You know, so what we do here is one thing, but I, I do think it's important to say that there is a lot that is going on and that has been averted because of it. And, you know, is it perfect? Absolutely not. But a lot has taken place since Columbine. So.
Agreed that, that a lot has taken place and a lot is done to stop these situations before they happen, but they still happen. So I think what trustee Paul Street said is, seems like something we could do as a village board of putting together different programs or education or support different things, whether with the school district or other elected boards to help avert, not react to, but avert situations by educating, giving people the tools they need within our community. I'm not, I'm not discrediting the the ask that, that you have of like, how do we hold our state people official, our state officials accountable? But I think if we look at like, what can we action and do? Maybe those type, those are first steps, right, that we could look towards it. How do we ensure that in kindergarten and first grade to see something, say something is just as ingrained as I got to see an officer today and I really enjoy them at my school, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And so I think that there's a lot of, of, of potential in looking at those things or things we can work to do while continuing the conversations with those that would have other avenues to do other things. But if I look at that, that, that could be something partnering with the police department, you know, programs.
I think educating people, parents to what to look for, getting their, underneath their own growth. So I think so many things are dismissed by the parents as everyday things. They don't notice the little tweakings out. I mean, if there's some way to put together a program where it was a board can promote information, you know, we can obviously partner and get that out too. But yeah, and getting the, the sense of if you see something or feel something, say something. It's, you know, this is not the time to keep it a secret. But I think education to, you know, getting people to understand what to look for because there are signs. And they're ignored or, you know, and I think that getting that job there.
And that's my point in bringing this up. I'm tired of nothing. We are in this position as an elected official to make things happen. We can make something. Something is better than nothing. I will take anything.
And I'm with you. Again, it's just let's, let's, let's take this conversation, take on it, and I, to your point, don't let us, let this go.
I'm not going to.
And no, I mean, I, I, I agree. And let's, let's figure out something that we can do within our authority that's going to make a difference. That's going to have some impact. Because passing a non, I'm being, I'm being realistic, passing a non-binding resolution saying that we're not, that we, you know, we're against gun violence and all this other stuff, it's just going to go in the books. And that's going to be it. It's going to go in the books and then we're going to, the next people that are, that are going to take these seats aren't going to pay any attention to it no more, so, no more so than we pay attention to resolutions unless they come up. I mean, let, let's be realistic. It's going to be, it's going to be a topic. It may end up on the news. It may be something that people talk about for a while, then it's going to be in the books and nobody's going to do any, a program would be started?
That might be something.
That might be something that keeps going. That might be something that, that is well looked at and well received from the community. Because then to trustee Paul Street's point, it's not this board trying to, well, it's not this board trying to, you know, take away guns or whatever. It's just trying to ensure that everybody's here for each other.
Is there currently any programs in this town for teenagers?
Unless they're offered by the school district? No.
No, is that, and I think that's a good, that's sad. The park district has great programs for young kids. The township has it for elderly programs. But that, that teen, tween teen and like 20s, there's not a lot. And 100% of all the damage and vandalism in the park system is from that group. Because they have nothing to do.
They're not coming to the library. That's why they have nothing to do. We offer programs for all of them and for the teens, and we have problems getting the teens to come to the library for teens programs and for their in.
But that's only one thing. And there are so many interests amongst, you know, even children, they don't, they're not all interested in one thing. Right? So what, we don't have a variety based thing. We have a few programs at the library. And as I keep saying, there's Casey's because that's what my kids have done. They go to Casey's.
Or you can banalize a bathroom.
They ride their bikes to Casey's or they walk there. And then they buy something and they sit and they talk because it's the only place where they can go. They can't go to Copper Barrel and sit down and afford what they would like to be able to do instead and chat with their friends. They can't go to the library and have snacks.
Or, or.
They can go to the library to have a conversation. We don't know, we have food when we have things that are going on. They can't come in with a sandwich and have their dinner.
Right. But what do some kids need? And so we're not addressing our community's needs from about 10 till about whenever they can leave.
I think that's where we can come together as different organizations and say, how do we solve something?
Then if, we have to include the churches too, because I know my church has a youth group for the younger ones that are in junior high. And then the middle schools, and then they've got one for the high school kids too. So the churches play a role in that. And I know that's an active group that is at least at my church that addresses the needs of that particular group. So, you know, the conversation has to include those churches as well.
It has to include everyone.
Even the non-church.
The whole thing, it takes a village to make a church. It literally does.
I just want to make sure that, I mean, there are programs in our town that are for this age group too. So there aren't as many and, and there probably should be more, but.
Well, there, there aren't as many of the programs that are available respectfully are pretty restrictive. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, to, and, and to, to your point, there's so many, and I don't have a teenager, but there's, there's so many different interests. There's some, some teenagers aren't going to be interested in joining a church group no more than they're going to be interested in hanging out at the library respectfully. It's, it's just the way that it is. And so, I mean, no more so than if the park district were to offer something that they would partake in.
That's really good. I think, I think the, the but by not offering, that's how you could offer more.
Correct, correct.
We, we could at least try to offer more.
Because I think everybody.
How to rebuild a park.
We're putting $100,000 into making buildings, buildings look nice. We're making nothing.
And that's where I think we could start to do something. And then programs, to your point, do something, a program can live on.
Yes.
It can make an impact in multiple generations.
Yes. Um, I, I appreciate you guys willing to discuss this. Like I said before, I, being in the position that we are in, I am tired of the inaction at all levels on this. So I felt it incumbent upon myself at least to try to do something because I'm tired of nothing. We see where nothing gets us.
I think we can all agree this is a multifaceted issue.
Completely is, as I said before.
And there can't be a single solution. A singular solution will not address this. It's not a singular cause. So how do we what is our part? What role can we play? Before discussing this again.
Again, I'm not, that's stifling. I mean, the conversation, let's chew on it for a while.
We're at a good point here. That's it, that's it for one.
All right. So other new business, not on the agenda. This is just, I want to bring this up just because I said, I told an individual that I would. I don't anticipate any action on it. There was a gentleman that called me from a, a solar company this week, mad because we don't allow, not, not you, not you. Mad because we don't allow solicitation at all, door knockers or anything. We did pass an ordinance some years ago that, that's restricted all, anything, uh, door knocking of any kind, period, unless it was for something that was protected by the state statute, which is religious or political. He, he asked that we might consider instilling like a permit process or something like that or an exception. And I just, I guess I'm bringing it up more so for the fact that I feel very strongly against it in general. I kind of like the fact that we have a no solicitation ordinance. I feel that if we open it up to, to allow permits, then that's going to make the police busier because then people are going to be knocking and saying they got permits and then no, you didn't get permits and all that kind of stuff. And so I kind of wanted to bring it up with a record that if a vendor thinks that they're going to get somewhere by calling the mayor and asking for an exception during the solicitation process, process that's already been placed, it's not going to happen. Unless this board feels strongly that we have a problem and we need to change it because we're restricting all kinds of businesses, don't be calling me asking if you can knock on doors because it's not going to, it's not going to go.
I think we're at a place, as far as technology is concerned, if I want something, I can get it.
Right.
Pretty easily. I don't need you knocking on the door.
And so, and well, and the argument, the argument was, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be transparent. It wasn't even a good argument. It was most of this. They hired high school kids, I'm guessing, to go knock on doors. And I said, well, why don't you set something up through the mail? Well, we don't do it in the paper. Okay, that sounds, that sounds legit. Yeah. So anyway, so I, I'm bringing it up because I told him that I would, and he said he was going to watch the video, so I hope that he is, but it's not changing.
I'll look right up here.
Anyhow, so now what everybody's favorite topic, let's talk about chickens. Because let's, okay, so we passed the chicken ordinance, so we got 10, we have 10, uh, 10 passes, 10 licenses, and all 10 were applied for. And everybody was happy until they read the ordinance after they applied for the licenses. So that's not to say everybody wasn't happy. I'm making a little joke out of it because we all know I love chickens. So there was been a couple, there were a bunch of people that are all ready to go. There have been people that have asked if our licenses extend to cover quails, which they do not. This was a chicken ordinance, uh, and that was it.
Maybe peacock.
Um, no peacocks, no peacocks, just chickens and no boosters. And you can only, you can only own four. I'm, I'm a chicken aficionado. I used to only know original recipe or extra recipe. Now I know everything about it. Uh, so we have, so in full transparency, Mr. Ray has spent a crazy amount of time this week looking into different ordinances with screening and that. So right now, the only concerns we have at this point with, with some of our residents would be our screening requirement, which we are not the first municipality to require screening. Uh, we are looking into what exactly is meant by that because there's some confusion as far as maybe that it might restrict some ventilation and it might be unhealthy for the chickens to have sun set ventilation. And I'm not making a joke about this. There's a gentleman at the U of I that we've been in contact with talking about the ventilation of chicken coops and that kind of stuff. Um, we also established through, through our planning and zoning process that the height of the coop can be six feet, not six feet, five inches, not six feet, eight inches, not seven feet, six feet. That's it. These are the rules we passed. It's a pilot program. We've heard from some individuals, we haven't heard from all 10 saying, oh my God, I can't do this. We've heard from some individuals that want things to be a little bit different. And if, if we find through our investigations that maybe there's changes that need to be made to the ordinance to add more clarity to things like the screening side of it, or maybe we find that maybe we need to adjust the height requirements because all of a sudden, the average height of a chicken coop is six foot, seven inches and we passed it at six. So we will address things on a case by case basis as they come. But it's not something that the residents can come to a meeting and ask for us to change and we vote on it right there. There is a process. And I'm saying this because we're recording. If there's change to height, screening, anything that has to do with the actual zoning part, i.e. the coop part of the ordinance, has to go through planning and zoning. So it's going to take a month.
Should be a variance for that.
Well, you would need a variance or we would need to change zoning. So if a person wants a six foot eight chicken coop, they can apply for a variance and go through that process if they so chose. If they don't want to do the screening as according to the ordinance, they could ask for a variance and go through that process, but that's going to cost them.
And the next one wants a seven foot chicken coop.
Well, they can.
So wants an eight foot.
They can apply for the variance and, and go.
They all want what they want for themselves.
You say that, that doesn't, just because you apply for the variance, it doesn't mean you get approved for the variance.
Right. So.
You'd be out a thousand bucks.
So anyhow, so again, it's not that the board is taking a hard stance. It's not that the board thinks that it knows more than anything else. And it's also not because we reached into a magic hat and didn't do our research and grabbed the first chicken ordinance that we saw. We put a lot, there was a lot of staff time and effort. Oh, sorry.
No, there's just, no, there's just a lot of chatter and I'm, I'm missing what you're saying.
Oh, sorry. There, there was a lot of staff time and effort put into this and we did not take this lightly. And so I, I, again, I bring this up to go on record to say that I think that we had a lot of interest right off the bat. I think that there was a lot of people that applied. There were some, not a lot of people, there were some people that applied for the license, not reading the ordinance all the way through. And it is what it is. And we're not going to stop issuing chicken permits or chicken licenses because there are concerns about an ordinance no more than we would stop issuing parking tickets if somebody had a problem with a parking.
There's been. Know your ordinance before you.
Correct. It's like building a shed and all this other stuff.
Right?
Yes.
I'll actually give you a chicken license.
Ten bucks, twenty bucks, twenty bucks, twenty bucks. All right. That's it. That's all I got on chickens. Does that help you, trustee Paul Street?
I feel much better.
Yeah.
Actually, to be honest with you, I mean, just following it on social media and people were all excited and, and then hearing that the licenses are already all gone. I mean, I was just kind of shocked. So that's why I wanted the update, just to see how it's going.
We started issuing the licenses Monday of this, last week, and they were gone by Wednesday, Thursday?
By the way, we have not received the 11th.
Yeah, well, we're not, we're not, the 11th, that has to do with my address. It's never going to come. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, I have not.
For Mr. Ed, uh, if we could reach out to the owners of the I don't know what else, called a strip mall on 72 right behind, near the construction where Ironlock Mall that is, and see if they need help having that abandoned COVID testing site removed off the property that we talked about months ago.
Yeah, I've had conversations with them. We're having multiple conversations with that property.
Okay. Yes. That would be great. Because I know we talked about it. They were here and we had said, hey, if you need some help, let us know. But it hasn't moved and it's never.
Right now, they're not moving because they haven't been paid for the rental space. They're all in an hostage.
All the clerks got, and they dragged the person who put it there doesn't seem to be here.
Isn't the other, the psychic also banned?
That was fine.
That's gone.
Well, she made a disagreement.
Well, we should find out who got that and where he lives and take it to the house and drop it off. It, it faces right on 72, as I saw. I just know they have come to me.
That is all I have. Can I, can I, can I entertain a motion to adjourn now, please? I heard the first, second.
Sorry.
Any other questions, comments? Serge, do you have any other words to whistle for us, Mr.? Any other questions, comments? Sir, do you have any other words to whistle for us, Mr. Hope?
Happy Fourth of July to everyone before we begin the fourth.
Okay, thank you. Happy Fourth of July. Mr. Kelly. Trustee Paul Street.
Remember to vote by the 28th and I.
Mr. Robinson, or Mr. Robinson. Mr. Martin. Hi. Mr. Coe.
Hi.
This voter.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Speaking is mature.